Programs are going full swing on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday. We did book a big soccer tournament for Saturday, November the 7th, and we've got a big BPA Fall Westfall Tournament this weekend. Right now, we have 14 teams, and we started new basketball extension yesterday, and that'll run through October 25th. Other than that, I'll be making preliminary plans to get ready for Christmas in the park.
Pretty much business as usual. I'd like to take an opportunity to brag on a couple of my best cases. We had some vandalism in the park last Thursday afternoon between about 2:00 and 4:00 o'clock. A citizen came in and told, they called us, we responded. There was some damage, significant damage in the men's bathroom in the park. Our investigators got on Friday morning and were able to pull some video footage, and we had another good eyewitness who saw some folks in the park. And there was some video footage pulled for some various businesses around Fort Payne who were able to track those folks, and we had them in custody by about 3:00 o'clock that afternoon. So, we were real lucky to get those people charged. They did about $800 worth of damage in the men's room in the city park. And I say that to go, maybe we need to look at possibly getting some cameras and some stuff put up. I got Eric, our in-house IT guy, kind of gave us some prices on some stuff, and we need a couple of cameras in some of the parks. Of course, you can't put them in the bathroom, but we can have them in strategic places and see what's coming and going, and see what kind of vandalism might be done. Y'all think on that. But other than that, it's business as usual.
First question I asked was, was it done at day or night? It was done in the daytime? Are we locking anything at night?
We don't lock, we very seldom lock the walking park or the city parks, because there's so much traffic. And we'll winterize and we'll close off at Spring, at Spring Grove, probably in the next couple of months, but those pretty much stay open 24/7. And we keep a pretty good eye on it. I mean, we're down there. We were able to kind of figure the time between 2:00 and 4:00, because we were down there working during the day, and they were fine at 12:30. And then when I got the call, it was around 4:30 or so. We were at that time, so. But there, see, you can't lock those doors from the inside. You have to lock them outside, so usually they have to have somebody watching the door when they're doing this kind of stuff. But when they went in over at the walking park, they didn't really do any particular damage, they just made a mess in there. But it's, you don't lock them.
The cameras will help.
Yeah, the cameras will help. I think once we catch some of them, get the word in the paper and things along that line, and really punish them pretty severely, it'll help.
Found out some good news yesterday for us. We have, y'all familiar with SCBA's? We've talked about seven containment reading apparatuses before. We had about 10, no, 7 packs called intraspiron packs. Honeywell came in, took a couple of years ago and bought the company out. Honeywell didn't like the pack that was on the market at the time, so they essentially said we're going to replace all, they want their packs replaced. I found out about that last week. It's a pack replacement program. We had 7 of those packs. I called the company, talked to them about it, got the information, and we applied and we were granted new packs coming our way. 7 new packs, which are what we have now, 10-plus years old. I was going to try to replace them next year anyway, but now they're being replaced for free. It's about a $20,000, $25,000 value that's coming our way. So, glad to get that in our place, and now that puts us all at our first-line packs or brand-new packs. So, we're happy about that.
Eddie, you having fun?
No.
Robin? Jimmy?
Everything pretty quiet, just trying to keep up.
Okay.
Still getting any more building permits? I know the last time you talked about how active that was.
We haven't had that many more houses in the last couple of weeks with rain and everything. We have had several modifications and limited electric permits, so, yeah, we're still getting some permits.
All right. Okay. Onto the agenda. First thing is the, this has been the second reading of the alcohol ordinance that deals with the hearing on the, for the alcohol committee. Any discussion on that?
Don't recall this, the seat that allows the alcohol review committee to conduct a hearing and met out punishment up to certain limits as they sit fit. Anything above those limits is automatically referred to.
Now, does it also, does it also change the ability of the council to have more leeway in that? In what they're doing, because previously, you know, the council did was, was.
Yes, it does. It allows them to impose whatever penalty they deem appropriate. So, yes, it, and you're not, the way it's written, you're not even limited. You could go back and impose a penalty that was actually less than the maximums that the alcohol committee could do, if that's what you wanted to do.
Any other discussion on that? Is anybody here to talk on behalf of this?
Adopt the resolution or the ordinance.
Motion for Randall, second from Johnny. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next is the, this is also the second reading of the lodging tax ordinance. This is the second reading.
This is the second reading. First reading, you recall, last meeting, we discussed that this increases the local lodging tax from 5% to 7%, and also changes the exemption from 900 to 180.
Okay, any discussion? Anybody here to speak on behalf of this? Okay. Motion from Randall. Second from Johnny. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next is the ordinance, this was one we tabled at last time.
No, this was something new that Rocky, you know, we authorized Rocky to obtain an attorney general's opinion at our last council meeting late today. He received word from the attorney general's opinion, and I'll let him address it.
They gave us an opinion, but not as an official opinion. They said since we had already passed the ordinance, they couldn't give us an official opinion, but I'll read one sentence to you. It says, "With regard to the opinion referred to in your request, we note in the opinion issued to Curtis H. Springer Jr., Presiding Judge Montgomery Municipal Court dated November 24, 1997, AG Number 9843, this office addressed your question stating that a municipal judge can assess a supervision fee upon each probationer as a condition of probation." So, basically, they said, "We can answer your question, but the answer is what we've already said," which was what we relied on in passing it. Now, in reading back through and looking again at the ordinance, the key is, I think, that it has to be imposed by the judge, and I'll take credit for the original draft, but what we have done is gone back and amended this ordinance to make it clear that this is discretionary with the judge. I think it's already in within this opinion, but because of all of the issues that are running around the state with regard to this opinion, I would prefer that you go ahead and adopt the amendment. Let me see.
13, 15, 13. Oh, all we have been in was Section 4.
That's right. Section 4 is amended to say that the judge of the municipal court may order a probation fee of $15 per month. That's the only difference. What we said is, we set a probation fee of $15 a month. Later language indicated that it had to be imposed by the judge, but this just makes it very clear, and I would recommend that you suspend the rules and pass this tonight, and that way you can recommence collecting that fee. I wouldn't go back, I'd just start today forward.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules to get this done.
Go call Lou?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye. Okay, we make a motion to pass the ordinance.
Aye.
Motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Rocky, be clear, we have to start from this point forward.
Not retroactively. I think we've got everything that we have got. There are no statutes on this, there's no Supreme Court case law on this. The only thing we have is AG's opinions. That's all we've got to rely upon, so. And there are some people that disagree with those opinions. At this point, I just sort of go forward, and if it becomes a problem, we just have to address that at that time.
Okay. Next is the resolution authorizing a financing agreement for a new fire truck. I think you all have a packet there that sort of lays it all out.
This probably should come after the bid opening.
I think so, yeah.
So, let's just move this down. Go after aisle number 4.
Okay, then on to new business. Is the, first thing on the new business is the adoption of the 2016 fiscal year budget?
As you recall, we had a work session yesterday, went over some adjustments. That's included, two pages into your packet. Total additional expenses after our meeting yesterday totaled $93,700. That's, this is the new total addition.
Right, since yes.
Yes. Jessica's been absent, so her final version 2 is not complete, however, version 1 would be version 2 with these changes.
Andy, what was the bottom line? Did we clear? Did we come in surplus overall?
I think based on the numbers that we saw in version 1, that if you make these changes, we're still going to come to the surplus of that.
But I just take out the children, replace the 80,000.
Yeah, I removed that, based on the conversation Rocky and I had, and the ordinance show was passed, so that 80,000 estimate is back.
I'll make a motion to adopt the 2016 budget. Got a motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
That's a lot of work behind us later.
Yeah, it's, you know, budget season's always, you know, it's a lot of meetings, a lot of work, and I was talking to folks last night, and we're really fortunate that we've got department heads that do such a great job getting it ready before we ever look at it. They do so much work on that with Jessica and with Andy that, you know, things that we have to do are very minor when it comes to the budget. I really want to pat you guys on the back for the job that you do.
Well, I'd say share with one for their diligence in getting this done. Timely matter, here we are, what, the 6th day of October, and I have seen it over in January, February, before we passed.
I've been doing it a long time, Johnny and Walter have, you have read it, it's a long time.
Yeah, but thank you, we do diligence and get it done in a timely fashion.
I want to say that I think this is the earliest, and I know at least since 2000, that this budget's ever been passed. And not just by a day or two, by a lot. And that's a, congratulations to everybody on this council, and all the people who work here.
Okay, next we have a couple of claims.
These have been claims, have been filed against the city of a couple of different instances, non-relate instances, but they have been forwarded to city's insurance carrier.
Any discussion on that? Okay, now the bid for the fire truck.
Don, you want to address that here? Where your dice? Never mind. I copied and pasted.
We got a package, somebody's got a case here. We want to, I want to make three recommendations. The first one, I want to say, we opened the bids for the fire engines. The low bidder was Sutton Fire with the dinner bin Williams fire apparatus out of Ashland, Alabama, which is down below Talladega. Sutton Fires builds their apparatus in Ohio, up in Ohio. Low bid for the unit was $440,687.1. Recommend that we accept that bid. We have options on number 2 there, options 1 and 2, which was the Shelby Dividers and water discharge, $53.75. Bring it to total bid price to $445,643.1. Great recommendation that we accept that.
Let me clarify something. Chief said it's the lowest qualified bidder. It was actually a lower bid from Rosenbauer, but they were disqualified because they did not meet specifications.
All bids were evaluated, became used, and tried to figure it did not make it through what we were looking for.
Let me also clarify, it did not meet the specs that the bid rider proposed.
Chief, let me ask you something. Does your proposal 2 for us, correct?
Well, right now, we're proposing, we accept the bid. The latest recommendation I'm making is that we buy 2 apparatuses at this time.
You want to buy the part?
Now, let's accept the bid. Motion to accept the bid.
Motion from Randall, second from Johnny. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Carry on, Don.
Now, I want to make the recommendation at this time, since we do have a windfall of a grant that came in, that we buy 2 apparatuses at this time, with the total coming for 2 apparatuses to $891,287.42. I'll pay 42 cents out of my pocket. The grant, the grant max was $300,000, the match was $15,000. We will have at the time, at July 29, 2016, expect the delayed delivery, date of delivery will allow $300,000 on hand, cash on hand, which will leave us a balance of $276,287.42. My second recommendation, my third recommendation, if we can get that balance, with financing from leasing to out of Tampa Flaw, they specialize in financing fire apparatus and fire equipment. You see the terms at the bottom there, those are the terms that they're proposing. 36 months at 2.73%, but annual payment starting at $115.17. Payment would be $97,720.98 a year.
The $97,000 payment that we would be making would simply be replaced, would replace the $100,000 that we have been putting back every year, and also kind of committed to doing it in the future, $100,000 every year for, you know, to bankroll these things, and that's what that would replace.
Yeah, we're actually not going to be out any more money than we would have been. I should be out less money for the next 3 years than we would have. And then at that point, we'll be able to discontinue that $100,000 a year holdback, for at least a few years until we see another truck in the future.
Chief, let me say if I understand this correctly. At a point in time, before your time, and probably before my time, there was only a 5-year replacement scheduled, replacing 1 truck every 5 years.
Yeah, Chief Field did have that going at that time. Chief Cunningham came on board, and we bumped it out considerably to 20 years or better.
But is it, but what I'm getting at, sometime 2011 or '12 or whatever, when it was time to buy a truck, there wasn't one bought. And that, that's correct. And that's the reason the necessity now for buying 2.
And what happened to the grant, the $300,000?
Sure.
It's been 2006 since the last truck was bought. Correct? Instead of the 5-year plan, we would have bought one in 2011.
We should have bought a truck in the last 10 years, but we didn't. And everybody knows why we didn't. We didn't have the money. Now, we weren't diligent the last 2 years, and we saved some money, which is great, I'm glad we started that program. And at delivery, we should have the money again. And we, at the left tower, really and truly, you know, we were about to go to the market with a bid, and they called me from the grant writers, and said, "You just got a grant." God is blessed.
And the units that you're replacing, one's an 85 model, one's an 82 model, is that correct?
We're actually, as you can see, the plan.
So, one of the units has been replaced 35 years ago. No, it was 33. I don't think that's unreasonable, replaced 35.
That's not, that's not accurate. It's, it's.
The first 2.
It's 93 and 96.
Both 2 will not be moved.
93 and 96 KME will move to reserve. They will come off the front line and move into reserve. Then 2000, 1980 and 1982 will be circled. One of those engines has to be taken out, circled off again. It cannot be used in a fire service. So, whoever we sell it to, they'll have to sign, I assume, Rocky and Anthony Davidson, they will not sell it back into the fire service. And then the others can be just sold to, I assume, the highs and bidder for surplus equipment. And yes, to answer your question, we are taking those out of our inventory, but we're moving the 93 and the 96 KME to reserve, which we have to have reserve engines. So, we're moving into the back line and bringing these 2 new ones up and running.
So, if your house is on fire, you're not going to have to wait on a 35-year-old truck to get there? Every day.
The rest of the trucks? Are the rest of the trucks?
The, my first out trucks, excluding these 2 here at the top of the page that I've shown you, are 2003 and 2006. To read a little further down, my plan is to take, because the 2 trucks that we're looking at here, we're doing something a little different. We're going with 1,000-gallon tanks. We've always done 500-gallon tank, we're going with 1,000-gallon water tank, which is, is good. We're going to place those out at Station 4 and Station 2, so we'll have 1,000 gallons of water at every structure fire we answer, and we'll have 1,000 gallons of water on both ends of the interstate. What I want to do, my next oldest first-line truck is Engine 3. It's 2003, it's on Lookout Mountain, coming up and down the mountain every day. It's going to start showing some wear and tear. What I want to do there is bring that truck down to Station 1, where it won't get as much abuse as it's going to get in Allen Station. I want to take my next oldest one, which is 2006, I want to take it from Station 2, it's right down here, put it up on the mountain. I'm hoping by doing that, spreading out my new and my more new, or flat and older, that I can get more life out of the trucks along the curve. So, I'm hoping by doing that, we can maybe get at least 3, if not 5, more years out of that next oldest truck, which is 2003. That's my plan.
Good plan from me. Very well thought out.
Always a good thing to say.
Committee recommends that we follow a recommendation of the chief. He's, he has definitely convinced us, and when I say it, I'll make a motion to purchase 2 fire engines at this time.
Got a motion from Randall, second from Walter. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Now, we need to review the resolution.
That's true.
Financing agreement. No, oh, this does, this not, this does not lock us into that, it just simply authorizes the next step. And then, to my understanding, Don, they'll send to a formal agreement after this resolution. At that time, Rocky can review it, make sure it's.
We're just saying we'd like to, we'd like to do business.
And if anyone else, local or whatever, can match that price, then we can.
I talked, and I, you might want to, we might want to try again, but I did go see 2 local banks a couple of months ago, with the rate we had at that time, which was 2.99. The rate they gave us back in June was 2.99 proposal. You see now, the proposal is 2.73. I carried that to 2 local banks. One just said, "Absolutely not, we can't do it." And the other said, "I'll maybe look and do it and just hit you out, but I don't really want to do it." That was at 2.99. I didn't think if he wanted to do 2.99, he would want to do 2.73.
Bro, you know. But I like from now the option, if they, if they want to do it.
Well, I can make that call tomorrow and show them what we got.
We had a motion in a second that is to authorize looking into this, but.
Authorize him to do what he needs to do and get these jobs. Bill, local. Me and Johnny.
Motion from Walter, second from Johnny. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
I'd just like to say now, it's been 6 months, and I do appreciate the city council and the mayor stepping out of the box and thinking outside the box with me. I know it was, it's been 6 months, but I think the decision you just made is a good decision for people in Fort Payne, and it's going to, it's going to be well-sued for the long term. So, thank you a bunch.
Thank you, Don.
Thanks for your hard work.
Okay, next we have activity permits. Chief, have you looked at all these activity permits? Or this sort of got 2?
I did not get in touch with Charles Anthony, Charles Anthony the gentleman, and I don't have the other name in practice, so I don't have a separate.
Christie Brandon.
That was good. Anthony's just a birthday party at the walking park.
That's 2 this weekend.
2:30 to 4:30. I don't see anything wrong with it.
What type of fundraiser is it?
They're doing a fundraiser to, oh, raising mighty the girls or something.
Is this traveling to Europe over spring break?
Yeah.
Band, isn't it?
I'm sorry?
Raise money for the band or somebody together.
And then it says, "Korean concert," but I don't know, local high school band has agreed to play.
Yeah, that little group that plays locally, they go come.
Motion to approve both of them. Motion from Walter, second from Ed. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Mayor?
I asked Aaron when he read this, and he said, "No, I had to read this," so I will read it. This is a proclamation, "Whereas fighting fires is one of the most hazardous professions, requiring physical strength, stamina, extensive training, courage, and selfless concern for the welfare of our citizens. And whereas in addition to their daily service to communities, firefighters throughout the state and across the nation have joined the muscular dysphoria association for the past 60 years in the fight against neuro muscular diseases. And whereas Fort Payne firefighters have partnered with the muscular dysphoria association each year through the Field of Vote, Field of Boot campaign for MDA. And whereas the muscular dysphoria association is extremely grateful to the city of Fort Payne for their support and dedication, and whereas funds collected by the city of Fort Payne firefighters assist MDA in providing medical services at local clinics, summer camps, research grants, support groups, and public education seminars at no cost to local children and families. And whereas in honor of the efforts of the city of Fort Payne firefighters, the muscular dysphoria association is sponsoring Fort Payne firefighter appreciation month. And whereas it is appropriate for all Fort Payne citizens to join the muscular dysphoria association in this tribute to our firefighters. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the city council of Fort Payne, Alabama, that the month of October 2015 is formally designated as Fort Payne firefighter appreciation month in Fort Payne, Alabama, and commends the Fort Payne firefighters for their efforts on the high of the muscular dysphoria association. And I think Darren's here tonight.
We've got Leon over there tonight.
Darren will have several words to say, and he didn't bring a boot, but.
Or a boat.
Got something better to mention?
But we'll. He wasn't kidding about you making a speech, was he?
I told, this is Mr. Logan Moore. Logan was my camper this past year at the MDA summer camp, and we're looking forward to many more summers together. I'd like to say thank you to the citizens of Fort Payne.
I'd like to say thank you to the citizens of Fort Payne and the cap company. And we got to kind of branch out a little bit, because we do a lot of work at Walmart, and everybody knows, we're at Walmart on Saturday. The Fort Payne Fire Department started a partnership with muscular dystrophy in the year two thousand. And since that date that we started in two thousand, and as of this year with the total so far, uh, we're at almost one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars that we've earned in fifteen years. And give the folks a Fort Payne hand for, for having us. We really appreciate them, uh, we appreciate your support, of course. I told Logan that he's welcome to speak, and he says he's not nervous. He was in Nick Saban's office about three weeks ago, had on all of his rings, and I think he had his hat on too. So if there's something you'd like to say, you're more than welcome to.
I'm Logan Moore, and I have muscular dystrophy conditions. And, uh, with the firefight, firefighters, uh, raising money with Field of Boot, it helps kids go to camp that their parents cannot pay for. And it's usually, I don't think it's any charge to the parents for the kids to go. And, uh, it, the fire departments have been a really big help with muscular dystrophy. And, uh, at the guest fire department, that's where I live, um, I think, yeah, I go to the Field of Boot every year for them. And, um, I actually went to the fire station probably three weeks ago. And, um, just to tell them thank you for all the stuff they've done. And there's a whole lot more of our departments I could thank, especially to the Fort Payne one, and I, I can go on. And, uh, it's, it's been a big help with the, with the awareness that, uh, the fire departments bring to muscular dystrophy. And, uh, they raise a lot of money most of the time, or all the time. And, um, it's just a really big help. And, uh, especially there is a bunch of firemen that go to the MDA summer camp, and they're counselors for the kids. And, uh, uh, on the first day, a fire department always comes and cooks for the entire camp. And, uh, it's, uh, again, it's just a really big help that all the stuff that the fire department's doing.
The, uh, the summer camp that he speaks of is eight hundred dollars to send one kid to camp over summer. And, uh, Alabama is fortunate enough to have one of the premier handicapped accessible camps in the country, uh, with Camp Aspas in Jackson's Gap. If you have never known anyone going to diabetic camp or cerebral palsy, anything in that nature, is held at Camp Aspas. We take one week out a year ago down there with MDA. And, uh, we average about sixty-seven campers per summer. And each camper has their own counselor, so we invade Camp Aspas and take over for a week. And like I said, there's a lot of firemen around the state that do that. Just appreciate y'all doing this for us, like MDA for sending that your way. I was about to read that, there's too many whereas's.
Well, we need to give this young man a hand.
And, Darren, you want to pass a hand?
You know what? I didn't bring a book tonight, but I'll sure borrow a hand.
Also special thanks to Fort Payne Fire. Good to go out.
Oh, I know.
Logan, thank you for speaking with us.
Bring them, get a road guide out.
Yeah.
Nelson, my next segment.
Roll the dial, Logan.
And Don was speaking a little while ago about fire trucks. On one of the budget adjustments, sixty-eight hundred dollar cardiac monitor, we've got a support agreement in here that needs to be authorized. That sixty-eight hundred dollars is an annual fee over a three-year term, it's twenty thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars. So we need to authorize the approval of that.
Motion authorized.
And, and Don to sign?
Motion from Randall, I think, kitchen, second from Johnny, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next is authorize the mayor chair to negotiate a line of credit.
Uh, we've been talking about the LED situation and doing, you know, something to get it started. But, uh, with interest rates being like they are now, uh, I've already approached one bank and gotten a kind of a semi-proposal, but it wasn't really what I wanted. Uh, I, I think we need a line of credit for, say, nine hundred, eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars. And be able to use it over, say, a five-year period. And we met with the fire, with the police, I mean, with the improvement authority. Uh, and, uh, they're going to be able to do some of the work for us. We'll try to contract some of it out locally and not try to do it all at one time. Uh, I'm not asking to actually give the authority to make the contract just to negotiate what I think would be best, and then we'll bring it back to you. I just want to be sure that this is what everybody wants to do before I waste my time, you know what I mean?
I think, I think, Mayor, that we, we're all on board, that we, we know we need to do this LED lighting project in the city. And, and I think this is the way to, the way to handle that at this point.
We want to keep it locally, I think we can.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like you to negotiate for several months and get the best done. But other than that, I'm, I'll make a motion that we authorize it.
Motion, Johnny? Second from Randall, that we authorize the mayor to begin negotiations of a lot of credit. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Lights look good downtown, Logan.
Well, I tell you, I, I don't know if any of you have, have, and some of you have been through the downtown area since they put the new LED lights on those lamp posts. It just changed the whole look of it, and I, I think that's the best thing it's been done in a long, long time.
Thanks, John.
Talk to Johnny for...
Yeah, that's a great job, John.
Good job.
If you haven't been through it, I heard you go through it tonight on the way home.
Absolutely.
What are we having, we're having from, uh...
First place.
You made this weight on those lights, did you find them in your truck? Where you found the lights? We lost the LED lights where Danny's truck, when you found them or what? Your truck, I don't know, you lost, you made a weight.
Oh, no, they supposed to have been shipped, and they were sitting on a dock, of course. Guys don't look sad. Found them though.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, I think most of you know that we've been working on our fuel situation. And we've got everything changed over, with the exception of, uh, going to ethanol. Uh, we, as soon as Tim gets his, uh, tank ready, where we can put some one hundred percent gasoline in it to use for the small equipment and some of the older equipment, then we'll switch over to the, uh, eighty-seven ethanol. Uh, based on what we bid last year, the number of gallons that we bid and everything, it will amount to a hundred and six thousand dollars savings. Of course, the prices now are lower, so we should, we should see more than that, uh, just from loan use. But this is actually reduced to cost of the purchase of fuel by a hundred and six thousand dollars. We haven't talked about Main Street program much, I know we have several times, but that's something that we need to, to get kind of resolved so that, uh, these folks can go ahead and hire a, a director. I think everybody needs to kind of make up their minds how we want to approach this. Whether we'll approach it on a one-shot basis, or whether we'll do something by the month, or, or, you know.
I think we've already determined that we're going to fund it, just a matter of, of Main Street telling us what we need to fund. We don't have any numbers yet, so...
Yeah, have a work session or something and, and let them, let the committee, Main Street committee bring a sort of proposal to us, what they'd like.
Uh, we, we...
I think we're ready to go on something.
I do too, yeah.
Did meet, uh, with, uh, Tom and had a telephone conference the other day, but it really didn't get down to dollars and cents. Uh, we talked about what the, uh, committee had on hand at the present time, what they were looking at bringing in. But we, we really don't know what, I guess, what the director's pay's going to be. I think that we pretty well got an agreement that it'll be on a contract basis with, with Main Street. In other words, we wouldn't be the employer of the director of Main Street. Uh, but I mean, that's a general consensus, but, you know.
And I think that was one of the things we were going to discuss, whether it was going to be, you know, a city employee. As I said, I think maybe we need to have a set up a work session. I, I was thinking maybe there was something still that the Main Street committee was waiting on, like some sort of final report, or there was something that...
I don't think that's, well, Lynn's here tonight, uh...
Uh, we're waiting on you.
Okay.
We can't, we cannot put out, uh, we can't advertise for a director until we know what kind of funding that we're going to be able to get, or if we're going to have to raise some ourselves. So, um, as soon as you guys decide, I mean, we met Monday with Mary Helmer and Johnny and the mayor and had a phone conference, um...
What, what, what is it going to take though, Lynn, I mean, you guys got to have a number.
What are you talking about?
Uh, the numbers that were being thrown around Monday were fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand for the salary?
No.
Let's just get it started.
Get it started.
The, the state director says that a low budget for a Main Street is about sixty thousand dollars.
Per year?
Yes, right. Um, personally, what I, I think we're looking for is just some help to get started. So, you know, in the first maybe one to three years till we can get self-sustaining. It's not something that I think that we want to rely on the city long-term. I mean, you know, if you want to fund it, fine, but hopefully, you know, that would be reduced over, over several years.
I think we just need to go ahead and set a date for a work session.
Wait, I tell you what, this, uh, there was a couple of things that's, that's been brought to that maybe we have a work session the next Tuesday. Give me just a couple of days, and I'll get with you, and we'll set it, we'll even set up a work schedule for the next council meeting or, or something prior to that, or, or after that, or...
We just don't want to lose momentum, I think, you know?
Absolutely.
Once we got it going, that, you know, everyone seemed to be so excited, and then you guys have done such wonderful work downtown with the lighting, and, you know, I, I just don't want to lose that momentum, because I think it's such a good thing if people are excited about it.
Well, we don't want you waiting on us, we, we actually...
I didn't realize we were waiting on, we, we thought we were waiting on you.
There, there was still some discussion on, on the amount, I think, when we sat down. Of course, these other guys need to hear it too. Uh, everybody's obligated to it, I mean, we're all, we're all excited about it. We just need to sit down and, and iron out a few little things, and, uh, it's, it's going, it's going to be a gap or something.
As time goes along, the lodging tax that we passed tonight, a certain percentage of that will go to Main Street. And that's one reason for doing it.
Help, help projects.
Yeah, and it'll take a while for that to start coming in, but it'll come in, we know it will.
And I, I think we understand that, I, um, the state, uh, people are just kind of on us to get a director or at least advertise and get a director hired, because we're kind of behind the, the gun with the other cities that were, uh, selected. So we have a training coming up in October, and that brings...
Oh, they, they just told us from the state that the other two cities who were, who were designated at the same time with us have already got a director, and they will be training their director, and we won't, because our training's in three weeks, two weeks. So just see if we can get, you know...
Well, like I said, I'll be with you, touch with you probably tomorrow, and we'll try to set something up just as soon as we can. And probably at least by the next council meeting, maybe even sooner.
I appreciate, I appreciate all you guys have done and how supportive we've been of the events we had, and hopefully we'll remember.
What's a date, Lynn, you would say, if I, if I, I would like to have this thing done by, what day would that be?
Tomorrow.
The director in place?
Yeah, this, this part of actually getting...
I'd like to have the director in place the first of December.
The first of December, okay, so that'd be...
They start advertising with you.
We have to act as soon as we know what kind of funding.
Can we do a launch?
We, we feel like, I mean, if we have a commitment for you guys, I think maybe we could go ahead and, go ahead and advertise, and we could work out the, um, you know...
Well, I think we've got a consensus that we're going to support the program, you know. If, if you come up here and hire a director for eighty thousand dollars, you're in trouble, I mean, I tell you that.
We're not going to do that. Um, okay, so that'd be good, Mom.
Let's just, let's just set a meeting.
That's what I'm trying to say, can, can we do a launch meeting maybe Thursday, does that work?
Launch meeting at your place?
Sure.
I think...
Matt, I, well, I'll get the rest of the board.
This coming Thursday?
Does that work for everyone?
I can't get my calendar to work, I don't know if I got it. At least, at least, let me make sure at least...
We'll, we'll sort of set it up right now for Thursday, eleven-thirty, unless something changes, and I, you know, we'll try to make that work. I'm good with that, Randall, you good with that yet? Are you good with it?
I can't get my calendar open, I don't know if I'm busy on the, I got, I got a dot there, but I can't make it open, so I'll, I'll see what I can do.
I only think I got you, but I can't think right now what it is, or...
Can't quit counting, I don't know.
We'll do it. Eleven-thirty Thursday.
Got that finished.
Sounds good.
Where?
Our place?
Your place?
I, it's my, it's my, it's my, gee.
It's my place?
She ain't going to give you free food, man.
Come on.
Not going to give them...
That did bribe, wasn't it?
You're right.
That did bribe, gee.
You're right.
He could only give the lawyer free food.
We'll work something out.
Okay. Mayor?
Uh, uh, most of you are aware that Gilvan sold a remainder of their buildings, possibly with the exception of their solar plant, uh, to Dennis Hicks. And that closes the, I think the, the, everything closing's set up for October the eighth. We have, still have that pumping station operating out there. Uh, we'll be awful one of his buildings till we get it changed out, and we're probably not going to do that till next spring. So I've asked Dennis to come and see me, and we'll just make sure that everything's all right with him. I think that the very worst case would be that we pay the power bill for the pumps, which we're going to have to do anyway once we get it to, in operation.
Is this the pump we're going to replace, you thought?
Yeah, yeah.
I thought that was on track to be done in November.
No, that's the one at Willcraft. Yeah, no. This is the one, you know, that Gilvan paid us so much money.
It's just basically a set-in.
It's a set-in. Now, the one at Willcraft's going to be a little more complicated than that, you know, and of course a lot bigger.
I thought the one that Gilvan was prior to the one that...
It was, but, uh, it's, it was not her, any hurry to do it, because nobody... It was, but, uh, it's, it was not her, any hurry to do it because nobody was really pushing it. And, uh, of course, it's not available yet anyway. It's been a, a, a long runout process just to get things built.
You, you got any info on that, Robert?
Uh, I'm not sure on, uh, when Gilvan Pump Station is supposed to be here, but, uh, part of the Willcraft Pump Station is supposed to be here October twenty-sixth. Drive panels, pumps, and everything will be here in November.
But really not much we can do till it all comes in.
Yeah, yeah.
There is what it is.
So, it'll be...
My best man, my best man's having a meeting appointment next Tuesday, so it's gonna be a slow process. I don't know if I'll have him back for three months. Course where he's going, isn't he? Huh? Course where he's going, isn't he? Best I can for City of Fort Payne.
I think everybody knows that we've been working real hard on the industry to go at the site down next to Ferguson. We've talked to several and we've been excluded systematically from most of them. The one that we really felt like we had a good shot at notified us last Saturday that they would not be coming here. They would be going either to Jasper, Alabama, or to Carrollton, Georgia. Uh, disappointing, but I don't know anything else that could have been done. Uh, we did everything that we possibly could have and promised some stuff that we had not even done. But it is what it is. Uh, I talked to the, uh, HR director at Howell today. Uh, you know, we have a, a man named Wayne Howell replaced Chris Kemp there as HR director. Uh, they are parking other employees' cars over on the complex parking lots because there just run out of space. I don't know what their plans are in the future to solve that problem. But he asked, was there any way that we could set up crosswalks because of the traffic at the school in the mornings and afternoons? Tim and I talked about it. I don't really think we can, but I told him I would mention it and, uh, for everybody to know what he requested. Uh, Howell's been very good to this town over the years and I'd like to do anything we can to help them. I don't know that this would really help that much. I mean, maybe...
We have a hard time controlling the one we have right in the middle of town. We definitely don't have the manpower to watch over two up there on, on school traffic there.
Well, I then, I told him I didn't figure we could, but I bring it up and I brought it up.
Uh, my concern would be being that close to the school that if we have too many of them, people are gonna avoid them more than what they do now. So, I'd be concerned more about that.
And I don't really think it would have much trouble getting across those rail light stop folks, you know, when the traffic backed up all the way to railroad track, but there will be. But once backed up all the way to, then it goes to the stop to its own. Yeah, yeah. Uh, as far as personnel's concerned, we, uh, hired a lady at the airport to replace Peggy. We got two, uh, in the court system that we, uh, did pay adjustments on. And then we had Lee Prater with the street department that, uh, is no longer with us. And that's all I've got. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, that's all we have. We need to go into executive session to discuss potential litigation. Pendleton, is there anyone here who'd like to say anything? Yes, sir.
I just wanna say thank the Fire Department for approving two trucks. It involves the safety of firefighters too and from all the guys that couldn't be here tonight working. We appreciate everything y'all done.
Thank you all. Any one of us? Logan, thanks for coming. Nice to meet you.
Yes, sir.
You come back anytime.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Not to speak to you anytime.
Post the air executive session. Post the air executive session.